Anything come to order? I don't know where Dan is, he'll probably come in a minute. You see the minutes he sent out today?
Yeah, I did.
They're not here?
Yeah, no, I saw it.
So, I'm okay with it?
I had a few issues with them.
You didn't?
We're waiting till this meeting to vote.
Well, there was, he just said, used the word "discussion."
No, he said "we voted."
No, I don't think so.
In the minutes.
Now, he got me confused. I'll have to get that email up and...
He said we met on January 10th.
Dan is here. Seems to be some question about your minutes, sir. I can't believe it.
Oh, yeah, I'm reading the wrong one.
Yeah, well, there you go. He's reading the wrong one. We didn't, he just used the word "we discuss things," he didn't...
No, that's all good, yeah. For some reason, I was reading a different one.
I'm reading them right now, when they pop up. Yeah. Okay. So, motion to approve the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Does the mayor have any communication other than what's on our agenda? Everybody here is gonna speak to this issue, so I'm gonna skip public speech, there's no new business. Continuing business. Last time we met, there was a discussion of whether or not we should delay this election or not. Also, we wanted to check on the cost of the election and how it could be funded. Couple things came up, and anybody in the room, correct me if I'm wrong. The MSBA will vote in June on the approval after the election?
August.
August? They're voting in August now?
It's always been.
It's been August. Ever since we did the redesign with the new location, moving the football field, it got bumped back to August.
All right, I thought it was June.
It's August.
And because I thought it was June, I was told it was 120 days after that that we have to have an election if we decided to postpone.
Right.
Which said it would be on the primary, and Barbara had informed me that it can't be on the primary. But if it's in August, then it could be in November.
Could be.
I have no intention of suggesting that, I'm just saying that's information I will receive. Secondly, Dan found out, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the money for the election can't come out of the funding that's currently being used to fund the architects' designs. It could come out of that fund and not out of the general.
Comes out of the project funding, not out of the city budget.
You're aware of that, mayor? Okay. So, those two things were things that we were talking about. Barbara, the reason we called you in, Joe had a question, this is the language we should have on the ballot.
Mm-hmm. You have to vote exactly as it's gonna go on the ballot.
And this is the language, and it's an override in the basic sense of the word.
It's a dead exclusion.
But the word override is still, we don't put it in the language.
Shall the city of East Hampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in Order 2?
Fond de précaire. Right. We're not allowed to put anything else in there, like the cost of the building or anything else. That's correct. And this is from the state.
State statute.
State statute, so we can't change the language even if we wanted to. Okay. That's all the questions we had. Sorry.
What's the question the mayor had about?
Well, and I, so this language, the secretary has already, like, we know that this is gonna be fine as far as Secretary of State and Elections Division.
It's, wording is set by Chapter 59, Section 21 CK. The only part that can be added by the community is the purpose or purposes.
The purpose being the new précaire through grade school project.
So, that's, I was just wondering.
Set by law.
Yeah.
We got that right from the MSBA. This councilor feels I have plenty of information, and I do not feel there's any reason to delay the election. We've had a school building committee working on this for two and a half years. The purpose of the council is to, as President McCoy informed or reminded me, was to decide if the question was legitimate, properly formed, and has a legitimate purpose. And it does, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm gonna go around the room if anybody wants to say anything. I have put out information primarily because as a councilor, I wanted to make sure that I could answer questions of my constituents. How much does it cost? Why are they doing them? Why are they moving the football field? Et cetera, et cetera. And I got all that information, I was very pleased. I was pleased with the forum the other night that I went to to see if there would be reactions from people about the CPA, the football field or anything. There was mostly positive reactions, some questions, but mostly positive reactions, and I've got plenty of information. So, I wanted to hand this out, councilors in the Finance Committee, to the full council for the purpose of saying, "You're voting on an election, this is what it's all about." Not necessarily, if you're gonna say no to it as a councilor, frankly, I don't think it's legitimate if you're saying no to it because you think it costs too much. That's the citizens', the taxpayers' decision, that's not ours. But, good. We've had one override to build a building way back the beginning of my terms that the council voted against doing, because they didn't like the project. I didn't think it was appropriate then, I don't think it's appropriate now. My speech is done. Who would like to go first? Anybody?
I would just say, Dan, I went back through some notes from part two years as a school building committee and saw where, it was actually in January of last year when we set in our calendar to have an election early spring. Instead of date, we just said early spring was preferred timeframe. Coming out of the holidays and everything, it would give us a solid five or six months to educate voters, get the word out. The fear of, maybe fear's not the right word, but the issue with November was you come out, you come out of the summer, Labor Day, you really only have about two solid months to get people up to speed and educated. No one's paying a lot of attention during the summer months, unfortunately. So, last January, we had put in our calendar early spring. It looks like in April is when we picked the May date, April of '17. So, everything's been working towards that date with all of our, you know, research and all of our, can't think of the word I wanna say right now, but all the efforts that we've been putting forward to bring this project to fruition were shooting for that May date. The approval from MSBA got pushed back because of new information that came to us about moving the location of the school. Basically, the architects almost had to go back to square one, and that's why there's been some delays. Everyone around the table has confirmed with MSBA there are no issues with having the election, the ballot question prior to their approval, no issues. Obviously, if for some unforeseen reason they didn't approve it, the project doesn't go anywhere.
And we don't spend any money anywhere.
Exactly.
I guess that was my question. Is this an advantage, having the community vote yes before they vote? Because if they decided to vote no, boy, that would be a...
Yeah, they, we have to, the architects and the OPM keep reminding us that MSBA wants to see successful projects in the state of Massachusetts. Clearly, if we get a yes vote here, this is gonna be a successful project, they're gonna back it. But one of the things they've said all along is, they wanna make sure that we have sought out public input, that we've looked for, you know, public reaction, that we have the support of the community. You know, do we have the support of the community on this project? Nothing like a vote to tell you if you have the support of the community. So, we can clearly go before MSBA in August and say, "We have the support of the community, they voted 60, 40, 50," whatever it might be.
Now, as far as I know, the estimates you've put forward the last forum, they're not gonna go up, but maybe the MSBA will find and give you more points for different things like solar power, and it might go down. Is that a correct statement?
No.
I mean, I would not want an election held personally, in which I have to explain, you said 109 million, now it's 115.
109 is not moving.
That's what I'm asking.
What can move is the mix of between city share and MSBA.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
But the 109 won't move.
But that mix of city share, that might, we might get some benefit.
Right.
To voting ahead of time, that's what I'm thinking, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah. I'm not sure about that, but 109 will.
That's all I'm saying, it can go down.
Yeah.
That's good.
The municipal share.
You have been moving down.
Right.
As they've refined the design, it has been moving down.
Right, good.
But you're saying that the municipal share cannot move up?
No, what I'm saying is the 109, the top number can't go up.
The top number's gonna remain the same. The question is, what will be the municipal share? Will that be?
That will be determined until, until you tell us, June? I think he said June last night, that'll be determined.
Is there a possibility that goes up? Because they decide not to give us as much?
They weren't predicting that when we were talking at our last meeting.
I think it'll only go up because...
Go what?
Meaning the percentage of reimbursement.
Okay.
The percentage of reimbursement can only go up. And it has to do with those bonus points.
Because I know what you're saying.
Bonus points for something like solar.
Relative to sustainability and things like that.
Okay. And we're seeking as many of those bonus points as we can. That's excellent.
They're pursuing a silver certification under the LEED program currently.
Even last night, we found out the percent, the now per square foot reimbursement has already gone up.
Not by a lot, but...
I think they said that saved us three quarters of a million?
Yeah.
In our share.
Over $7 a square foot, just recently.
In our share.
$720,000 is real money, so that's good. Anybody else? Dan?
Just this letter, so I just, we talked about this a little bit. In the first sentence about recommending override election, so is that, I don't really have a preference on the language.
I'll just say, no, I've already wrote the word "dead exclusion" in, because Barbara's saying that's what we should put, that's what I think. This is simply, yeah, I did it there too. This is simply to the councilors, it's not something that goes anywhere else. The only thing that goes, the stuff in the italics is what we're voting on.
Gotcha.
Everything else is information. I call it an override, maybe I'm incorrect, but that's me.
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm not Barbara.
Number six, about bonding.
Yep.
So, we haven't, the bonding process, it ultimately comes down to main with advice from others, so the...
Well, I probably should say the current idea is?
Yeah, I mean, or...
Because we had a lot of discussion with that at the last meeting, and I wanted to, I think the question will come up.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I am looking at options, and I'm worried about interest rates going up and affordability and whatnot. You know, yes, typically, we bond 20-years level principal.
I saw, I'm gonna say the current...
That's definitely what we're gonna do.
The mayor currently feels a 20-year bond is appropriate? I mean, what language, what I'm trying to do here is provide this...
The mayor's investigating the finance structure East Hampton has used in the past, which is a 20-year option bond.
That's a better option.
Right. And then we can look, a meeting with the financial advisor, our bonding advisor next week, to start getting a little more information and education.
Which has traditionally been a 20-year bond. That's what I'll say.
Well, I just don't want people to think that that's the decision. You want final costs, I want final costs.
Okay, sure. Again, this is information so that I'm trying to make sure that people's questions may be answered before they have a two-hour meeting on it.
Number seven with nothing next to it, did you get rid of that?
I did, you didn't get my revised. That was me saying, "What else can I?" And based on our last discussion, it was $3.76 per thousand, $3.76 per thousand was what Melissa gave me as a cost.
$3.78, I think.
We were $3.78 last night.
I thought, I was, sorry.
The spreadsheet that she sent us is 3.76.
I was just saying, like, the long...
So, it is 3.76.
Moving target.
Yeah, she did say 3.78, but she later distributed.
And I use the word estimated.
A document that said 3.76.
And I have the word "estimated" and "if bonded over 20 years." So, it's not like we're making a, I'm not telling the council, the mayor's decided this, but I will tell the council that it is the mayor and the Finance Director's decision, and that will be determined in the future when we know the costs, more about the costs.
Right, so the number, you know, the 3.76 or 3.78, you know, is based on current conditions. You know, principal level payments, I mean, you can do a 20-year bond and do different things.
Borrowing it all at once.
Yeah, borrowing it in pumps, almost like a construction loan.
As you need it, right.
Yeah. And just what the conditions of the market will be, and if we can split the difference a little bit on interest.
Current interest rate is 4% that you're looking at?
Well, that's what we're assuming, but we don't go out and bond for a while.
And how long? That could change, but you're basing the 3.76 a thousand?
Wait, the 3.76 was at four and a half?
The 3.76 fixed six-figure was based on four and a half with a moving borrowing or a fixed borrow?
Fixed.
Fixed, all up front at once?
Yeah.
Which is really a worst-case kind of scenario?
Yes, and so that language, worst-case scenario, that's what we look at, but...
And the 20-year scheme, payback schedule, is the worst-case scenario of the considerations you're considering?
I don't know if it's the worst case, I think it's the most, you know, maybe...
I think it's cost-effective.
What would, I mean, worst-case in terms of the most it's gonna raise the tax rate?
I'm not promising that, I mean, I hope not, I mean, I'm not looking to get the mortgage council board...
Well, I guess, I mean, let me try to rephrase that. If you did a 30, I'm thinking of a typical, think even in mortgage terms, a 30-year schedule, your payment would go down, and your term would increase 10 years.
Right.
Okay, from 20 to 30. I'm thinking that, I was thinking 3.76 would be the highest rate?
At 20 years.
Tax rate at 20 years that we'd be looking at, so I'm calling it a worst-case scenario in that it'd be the most expensive financing option.
It depends on where you put "most expensive," so I think I heard Melissa say, "If we did a 30-year bond, it would cost the taxpayers an extra $5 million."
That's a different way of...
Right, it would cost an extra $5 million. Now, will it...
That's in money spent over time.
Will it make my monthly payment a little bit higher by shrinking it to 20? Yes. The monthly payment will be higher.
I'm sorry, the monthly payment will be higher at 20, right, so that becomes the highest monthly payment.
Correct, but the lowest overall cost. The lowest overall cost.
And the lowest overall cost that you're certainly facing.
I think one of the other things that was talked about is, what we like about a 20-year bond was that the cost goes down every year. And as opposed to other kinds of, I used the word gimmicky kind of things, that you could do 30-year bonds or other kinds of spreading out the loaning, but it costs a lot more in the long term. I mean, $5 million over time, I thought it would even be more than that, is a lot. Plus, you're paying it on it for 10 more years. But again, that's their decision, how they wanna do it, and I think you look at the best... We go through these kinds of things every once in a while, we might have another building to build, and we have a 30-year bond to wait till it's gone. I don't make that decision, but I would not want a 30-year bond if we had to build another building or something, you know?
And certainly, I mean, the 20-year principal level, it's the, you know, most efficient use of maybe taxpayer dollars on the face of the dollar. But I also, I mean, I certainly heard, and I think we heard a little bit on the forum, there are concerns about affordability, and when you look at the demographics of East Hampton, what will happen in the next 10 years, when the average homeowner's age, and what that hit might be, what that means to somebody, you know, who is 80, and what it means to somebody who's very young, 50, and what costs they can bear. So, does it help affordability that maybe you make your 30-year note, and it's a little more interest or a lower payment? It is a financial decision, and the city has excellent fiscal responsibility history, and I don't want to disturb that, but I also wanna look at what is best for what people are looking at.
I thought that the savings monthly to the individual taxpayer wasn't that great compared to the long-term cost.
It might not be. I mean, I don't wanna finance as a political picnic, and I have no intention of doing that, but I do wanna look at the different options. And I also wanna make sure that what the ultimate decision is, is that it's a flexible financing product. So, maybe it's a 20-year, or maybe it's a 30, that we have the option to refinance, like we did with Public Safety.
I assume that too.
Yeah, so I mean, when you're talking about, or combining bonds, or consolidating them, we need a strong product, a portable product, but a flexible bond product. And I have a lot of hope.
Yeah, that advisor will give a lot of options.
Yeah, and he has already, we have really good conversations, I feel, I feel I would be much more versed on options, even if we don't know the final, you know, numbers or what the bond is, you know, after next week.
At the end of the day, again, if I understand correctly, that's a decision that's coming from you?
From you and Melissa?
Yeah, yeah. Seeing you have a finance director, but also, maybe it's me that signs it.
Okay.
Is that by statute?
The mayor's...
That authority?
Yeah, I mean, it's an executive, I say yeah.
I presume so.
It's charter-based, and it's also city finance law from the government, government finance authority for cities, plus our charter.
Is there one more vote in there though, Barb, where the city council has to vote to authorize the borrowing, when we know the number?
Yeah, that'll be later on. Now, I don't think, and I'm asking this because your information about the fact that it could be paid for out of the election, could be paid for out of the funding already in place, means I don't think that's gonna come back to us, because you're not gonna ask for a transfer out of Reserve or someplace, if it's gonna be paid for from there, because that's the school building authority decision, how that money is spent. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
So, you decide, "We're gonna spend the $10,000 whatever for the election out of that funding," and you're on board with that.
And again, that's following the model of what we do with the high school.
Right.
It was paid for on the project ones.
Okay.
Well, Dan, look at the letter, can I, does I ask Barb a question? I thought you just said that the vote comes back to the council for the bond issue.
Correct.
But that's in a year or two.
If the citizens...
If the public says yes.
Then the bonding goes through the whole borrowing process, like a borrowing...
Yeah, it always does, like it always does.
And once that done, then the project begins.
Well, we probably have to bond for architects' drawings, I would imagine, right?
But once we know, are we bonding 50 million, 59 million, 61 million?
Right, and what the terms of the bonding are, I presume.
And keep in mind, JP, what that will require is, this whole project has to have a lot to bid to get that number, you know, settled, so to speak.
Do we have to bond a little bit to pay for the architect's drawings? I mean, that's, they have to do all that work.
I think that's all being done now, as part of it.
Oh, really? It's already paid for? I did that? Okay. Any other questions? Any other statements?
Just wanted, certainly, I think the mayor's right, it is, as much as I would like to see a 20-year schedule, and that's been our history, it really depends on how long someone's living in the city. If you're gonna live in the city for the next five years, maybe you say, "Let's have a 30-year schedule," and I'd be much happier with that as a citizen. If I were gonna be in a 27-year or more plan in East Hampton, it certainly makes sense to have a lower schedule, because you want, over the long run, to pay less interest. It really depends where you are, it makes it maybe a little more affordable for all the citizens, especially those who are... This is a huge investment in our future.
It is.
For the city and for the children.
And while it's a huge expenditure and consideration, I mean, with exactly what you said, JP, we also, I certainly, it means large in my mind, you know, the fiduciary responsibility to citizens and tax dollars, and so there's not one thing that weighs more, but, you know, I'm just trying to take it all into consideration. And talking to other municipalities who have, who have gone through multiple school building projects, and I know Dale has gone through multiple school building projects, and talking to Melissa about what she's hearing from finance directors, and there are different ways to go about it. All that said, the way we look at our budget in East Hampton historically sets a firm precedent of how we're best positioned against economic swings. So, to do something radically different, we'd be against, you know, improving fiscal behavior for, but we don't wanna do something radical, did that red flags?
I think for me, if the 30-year bond saved, you know, a good percentage of monthly cost to the homeowner, then it should be considered. But if it's not much, then I think you have to weigh that against the long-term health of the city financially. 30 years is a long time, and it's a lot of interest.
Yeah.
And a building that was 109 million is now 130 after you pay all the interest. So, I think that's a tough decision, but to me, I take out a 30-year mortgage, because it's a monthly payment thing, but when you're only taking out a $200,000 mortgage, it's a little different than 60 million, so.
I agree.
So, that's, I think that's the issue. I mean, how much is it per month, and whether or not it's what people want, and whether you feel it's the best interest of the city, so.
And certainly, I would defer input from this committee in the council, and certainly even bringing it to the school committee, and talking through, like, the different options that seem most reasonable and where I ended up.
I think as the election comes forward, you're gonna get a lot of questions along those regards. We're gonna get questions?
Yeah.
And my response was going to be, "Well, we don't save a lot per month, but we spend a lot over time for 30 years." That was gonna be my response if someone from the public asked me, "Why 20, why not 30?" It's different than your house. Your house, yes, you save a lot of money per month, but this is a lot different. And I think putting a burden on the taxpayers for 10 extra years has to be worth it. That's a tough decision we have to make.
It is.
So, I don't wanna get too bogged down, because I know this isn't like our responsibility, it's yours and Melissa's and whoever you counsel with. But are these kind of bondings like a mortgage where you can prepay principal, down principal? And if so, because it keeps coming up, can we use marijuana money just to knock down principal at all?
I actually asked the cannabis, or the CCC, whatever those three Cs stand for.
Interference Control Commission.
Yeah. Another acronym. If that's possible, from their perspective, and they're having a public hearing, 4th through 5th at HCC, and I hope to get an answer before that, but it would be a question I ask on the record. I've gotta, kinda gotta split, some people say yes, some people say no, some parts you can prepay, but there's a cost in that term, and I just don't really...
Is there free payment penalty, like there would be?
No, not, it's like if you wanna, I don't know, for some reason, we wanted to take out a note and then we could pay off or prepay principal to save on interest. It seems that it's not, but it doesn't seem likely, and I might take that all back after I talk to our bonding advisor, so.
Anything we can do to make it look, well, we know we're trying to help, especially fixed-income senior citizens, anything we can do.
And I've heard that, and first-time homebuyers, you know, people coming in and so excited to buy their first home, and it's an extra, you know, an extra $1,000, an extra $800, it's whatever, it's next to $200. Those budgets are tight, and we want young families, and we want them to come to East Hampton schools.
And I don't know the numbers at all, I've just heard them sort of anecdotally, but I still continue to hear that if you look at East Hampton's tax rate, it's very favorable even with this to communities around us?
Yeah.
So, if you're gonna look at a house in East Hampton, it's probably still a pretty attractive option.
Yeah, we're certainly lower than HOPE, although the residential is pretty bad. I don't think our tax rate is prohibitive to businesses, definitely. And residentially, can you compare the services?
I don't think anybody's gonna question that. The question's gonna be, it's an immediate hit, it's a big increase immediately. It's not something, "Oh, yeah, the tax rate is still lower than everybody, but I have to pay a lot more than I did last year."
Right.
I mean, we have to look at it from those simplistic but real terms.
It's just the voters who are gonna be looking at it, it's not the people who are gonna look here in the future.
Yeah, they'll know about it.
And I think at the school building committee meetings, you've had some strong arguments to say, "If you wait another year, or two, or five, or 10 to address the issue that is present, how much more will it cost?"
We have that on our PowerPoint, you know, anybody can go on our website and see that.
And I love what you gave out at the forum about the cost of maintaining these buildings now, especially White Brook, heat's always going down, massive operational costs that will continue and get worse. We can't keep kicking the can down the road as far as I'm concerned, but that's just... Anything else you guys? I will revise this based on what I've heard tonight. Again, this is not what we're voting on. We're voting on the question. The information I'm providing the council is informational, and it doesn't necess, and I want it to reflect what Nicole has stated, making sure we have the right language in here, the right funding estimates, and I'm gonna make sure that word, I'll highlight that, it's an estimate. The bonding consideration is a current thought, but not, it's an estimate, it's not something we're gonna do. But again, we're only voting on the question. Is the question legitimate? And is it appropriate? In fact, the date of the election isn't what we're voting on, just to be clear. We're voting on the question. Is that a council decision?
Yeah, you have to tell me when we're gonna do that election.
I think it was written in the original motion.
May twenty-second.